This meeting to order, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of the Constitution, the Constitution of the United States of America.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Christensen.
Here.
Mr. McGregor.
Here.
Mr. Modrak.
Here.
Mr. Nagel.
Here.
Mrs. Ruhl.
Here.
Mr. Scalzo.
Here.
Mr. Spicuzza.
Present.
Mrs. Turner.
Here.
Mrs. Dobos.
Here.
All nine members present.
At this time, we have a presentation from the Hayes Design Group about an update on our summer projects. Mr. Hayes.
Good evening, everybody. For the board members, you should have a single sheet paper in front of you. We'll see a few slides as we go through. On the various projects for the summer. And for the paving projects, we'll necessitate some further investigation in a longer period. As such, it is now recommended we have two bid packages. The first bid packages would include the Neil Armstrong Middle School Cafeteria Flooring and the storefront windows at the front of the building. And the other bid package would be for the IMS Gym and Paving Projects. We'll go over some of the schedule. NAM's Cafeteria Floor Replacement, in terms of, after completing our investigation regarding the condition of the existing floor, it's been determined that the discoloration happening on about one-half of the floor at the cafeteria. The fact we do use the proper is adhesives. So, we'll include removing the existing and putting new down. All right. In terms of the NAM storefront replacement, again, we've completed the construction documents. That's ready to bid. The manufacturers represented indicated that the lead time for the materials, the window itself, is approximately six to eight weeks from the time that the drawings are approved. We actually think that's fairly optimistic. And because that, we're recommending. Go ahead and bid the project to be before August 20th, or when it's going to be occupied. The other option would be to allow them to complete installation by October 29th. They're going to be responsible if the second option is chosen by the board to maintain the security and the. So, what's going to mean is they have to install, not during non-school hours, any section they take out, they're going to have to replace that. And that's a fairly common practice. In the range of $25,000 to $150,000. Any questions about this?
Why two dates? I don't get it.
Yeah. So, it's possible that there's a window manufacturer installer out there that does have the capacity and could get the windows installed early. However, we believe that's only going to be one bidder. So, in order to give the flexibility and also get our bids and hopefully get better pricing, we're giving them the second option because most of the window manufacturers that we've talked to, because we've talked to a number of leading ones, have indicated they don't think they're going to be able to do it before August 20th. And again, once you have the bids, if we have bids for doing it before August 20th, and that's a competent, you know, window manufacturer installer, and the price report could choose to award that contract, but if it's. All right. In terms of IMS Gymnasium Flooring and HVAC Replacement, so we have a flooring contractor remove a section of the existing floor to see what was underneath, what we discovered. On that, how with new. Those were. During the feasibility study as needing to be replaced, we just moved that up and do that now. And then after those were installed, you'll have humidity control and the new floor can be installed. What that will mean, though, is that the timeframe is to have that, you know, both the new HVAC units installed and the new floor installed, that will be sometime after school starts.
Mr. Hayes.
Yes.
Quick question. Any looking into a synthetic floor versus a wood floor?
Yes, we did look at that. We also talked to the athletic director in the district because the IMS Gym.
Mr. Hayes, is there any significant savings if you went with a, just out of curiosity?
There would be some, but it wouldn't be significant. You'd also have, you know, ongoing maintenance issues with synthetic floor. That's a concern as well.
Thank you.
If you turn your page over, we can look at the district paving replacement. The civil engineer, civil environmental consultants performed a Pacer analysis. At this point, if I could ask us to share some of the slides. We'll just go through. Thank you, Juan. The first, after these slides, the first six or seven, we're just going to scroll through. It's the entire Pacer report and kind of detailed analysis. And again, we can just scroll, well, not too fast, but again, there's just a lot of information there. And what's easier is to summarize that by looking at the various graphics. So, in the Pacer report, they then create a site plan that shows varying degrees of condition for the pavement. Green is, means it's in good condition. And if it's possible, sorry, Doug, thank you very much for making it a little smaller. We can see the, there we go. So, green means that the condition of the paving is good. Yellow is moderate, fair. And as you go into orange and then red, that's worse. So, at, this first one, Abraham Lincoln, you can see most of the paving's in pretty good shape. There are several areas that are not in great shape. And we'll talk about, a little bit about the scope in one moment. So, if we can go to the next slide, Doug. And then, we're now looking at Ben Franklin. And as you can see, it's mostly yellow, some green, just a little bit of orange. Again, relatively good condition. If we can go to the next slide. Here at William Penn, you know, of the elementary schools, William Penn's in the worst condition. But again, the main entrance drive, one parking lot's in fair to good condition. The turnaround is in moderate condition, and then the one parking lot is not so good. The upshot to all of those, we kind of treat the elementary schools as their own project. Orange and red would be milled with an overlay, which is less expensive than a full depth replacement. And the green areas, there would be just a crack, sealing of the cracks, filling some of the cracks, and then doing an overseal over the whole lot. Relatively inexpensive. We'll get the district four to five years on those lots and make them much more usable than they are today. When we turn the page or go to the next slide, you can see, this is the bus garage. As you can see, warning sign, it is in very bad shape. There has really been no work at that lot for over 30 years. And it's in need of full replacement. The upshot is that the recommendation for this would be, because we're not going to be able to do all of that work before the start of school, and because the operation of the bus garage is critical for servicing the buses, the recommendation is that the access road to, which is really the worst condition of everything, would be replaced, and that can be done this summer. And that can be bid with the elementary schools, and that work can be done this summer. And it may, it may go over into the school year, but the, just the access drive can be done in such a way as not to interrupt the use and function of the bus garage. And then look to bid the remainder, the remaining lot itself after the new year, and then have that work done in the summer of next year. If there's any other thoughts, I want to.
I have a question about the bus garage.
Sure.
For years, we've been supposed to be paving it, but there's a problem because of the water retention and the need for approval and so forth.
Yes.
And so on. So, I know that we've just been putting milled asphalt down from many of the projects around the school district to continue to maintain it.
Right.
So, you're aware of all of those?
We are. And that's also one of the reasons for looking to do most of the work next year, because there will be a need to reduce. And again, the stormwater will be a part of the project. There is some stormwater work that will be a part of the project. Yes. That review and approval process, again, will also delay the project. So, again, delaying the bulk of the work until next year will allow that to be done.
One other question, too. In terms of all the ability to mill the other buildings.
Yes.
There's no subsurface failures that we're aware of in those areas?
Not any, no, not any sign of any great one. There's a few areas, and there will be some full depth replacement, but very small portion of the areas, most of the time, the subbase looks in pretty good shape.
That's good. Thank you.
With regard to the general HVAC work that has to be done in several of the different proposals that you have here.
Yes.
We have an HVAC person, so I'm assuming you have been in contact and consulting with him, because he does a lot of the work that we've had to have over the years.
Yes.
And so, in consulting with him to reduce costs, if he can help out, you'd be using him, right?
Yes. Yeah, Mr. Kramer has been involved, and we've been talking to him. Right now, the recommendation is that we would specify, and again, we would have HVAC engineers working to specify the equipment, the correct tonnage, the controls, the correct BTUs. Mr. Kramer would be working with them and confirming the order for the unit. In order to save time, the recommendation is to buy the unit through Co-Stars, which is the co-op program that allows you to purchase equipment directly by the district. And that's already been pre-bid among the manufacturers, so you have competitive bids from manufacturers for their units. And then we would bid publicly the installation of that work by an HVAC contractor, so.
I'm only asking because he knows our systems inside and out.
He very much does. And we are definitely working with Mr. Kramer in this effort. Not sure what's happening on the screen right now, but. Don't get mesmerized. I'm not trying to hypnotize anybody. In terms of general thoughts on schedule, project parameters, board action, again, we're asking that the board authorize bidding of the NAMs projects as one bid package, and the IMS Flooring HVAC and Paving Projects as another bid package at tonight's meeting. The board has asked to ratify the owner-architect agreement created by the district. There's solicitor and the architect. And we're looking, actually, there's one correction to that. Instead of this evening, that would be next week. That'll give you a chance to review it. I believe that's going to be shared by the district administration with the board. You can review it. We can answer questions about that next week. The NAMs projects will be advertised to bid on three separate dates, starting on May 20th, with bids due and publicly opened on June 3rd or June 7th. We're still working that date out. And then, what we're asking the board to consider is a special meeting on Tuesday, June 8th, to review the bids and award the contracts for the NAMs projects. Then we're looking at the IMS Flooring HVAC and Paving Projects to be ready to be advertised to bid on three separate dates, beginning on June 11th, tentatively, plus or minus, with bids due and publicly opened on July 1st. We're then also asking the board for a special meeting on Tuesday, July 6th, to review bids and award contracts for the flooring and the paving.
I think the one meeting is the 25th of April. That's next Tuesday. I mean.
That's correct. And the second, and the second point, if people want to mark up their hard copy, the board is asked to ratify on May 25th the owner-architect. And that's the report for this evening.
Just one last question. Confidence and the number of bidders, you think we'll be okay getting adequate bidders for this, these projects?
We do. And that's one of the reasons why we're recommending the schedule that we're doing. I don't think, I mean, it will not be possible to get pavers to, you know, to be interested in this project at this time for completion by August 20th. They're almost all booked and, you know, right through Labor Day weekend. But given that the opportunity to do the work in the fall, there's been a lot of interest. So, we think there will. And then, in terms of the storefront and the cafeteria flooring, there's definitely interest in that.
Good.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Hayes.
You're welcome. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
I'd like a motion to adopt the agenda items, the agenda for business items.
So, moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Christensen, seconded by Mr. Spicuzza.
Voting is open.
I'd like a motion to.
Mrs. Ruhl.
Mrs. Ruhl?
Yes. Nothing came up on mine.
I'd like a motion to approve the minutes of our meetings of March 16th, 2021, April 27th, 2021, and March 23rd, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Turner and seconded by Mr. Spicuzza.
Voting is open. Mrs. Ruhl?
Yes.
Motion carries.
At this time, we have public comments on agenda items. I'd like to remind the public that you can call 412-851-6911. Also, in order to make a public comment or filling out the Google form. I don't see any, I don't see any responses in the Google form. Does anybody else? Okay. Any phone calls?
There are no calls.
So, we'll move to action items. Mr. McGregor. Personnel committee.
Okay, we have one item there, the approval of paid summer internships that I moved that we approved.
Okay, I need a second. Seconded by Mr. Scalzo. Would someone like to explain this to us? I don't think we've had, have we ever had this before?
I'm not sure if we ever had this before, but yeah, the goal is that we want to have an IT, maintenance, and business office summer intern, not to go over 30 hours a week, 29.5, and we're going to do it at $12 an hour. We've gotten some good interest already for potential candidates. So, when we started getting interest, we started talking as an administration team, is this something that we all could use? So, talked to Doug, and Doug said, "Yeah, let's go for it." And so, that's why it's in front of you today, and they'll be helping us out throughout the summer, just for the summer, though.
So, these are college students who are interested in these careers?
Correct, yes. It would all be college students.
Any other questions? Comments?
Mr. Fearstone?
Yes, Mr. Fearstone's on.
Yes.
This maintenance department, any insight, what your thoughts for this person?
It's from Pittsburgh Technical College. It's basically anyone who can kind of, wants to come in and learn the ropes. This is for, we're open for electrician and HVAC, whoever wants to come over first.
Good. Thank you.
That sounds good. Mr. McCoslin?
Voting is open. Mrs. Ruhl?
He fixed it, but yes, no, it finally came up.
Motion carries.
Mr. Christensen?
Under Finance, we have two items. We'll vote on these independently. Just a question. I think we want to have some discussion around the proposed final general fund. Do you want to make a motion first?
Make a motion first.
And then we'll have discussion?
Yeah.
Okay. So, on item number one in Finance, I move to adopt the 2021-2022 proposed final general fund budget.
Okay, I need a second.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Scalzo. You want to generate the discussion?
Yeah. So, in the general fund, well, actually, I think Mr. McCoslin can walk us through some of the changes. But we had talked earlier today, I think it's appropriate to have some discussion around a proposed millage rate increase. And I think, Mr. McCoslin, did you, you had a couple of views on the data?
Yeah, I can give you, I mean, I can run through this very quickly. You've seen a lot of it before. I just wanted to give you an update where we were and where we are now with the budget. Remember, in February, we started at about $1.3 million deficit. Currently, as it stands today, and I forgot to put May up here on the slide, but there's, it's a deficit of $477,000. I could, you know, I kind of alluded to what the major increases are for personnel, software, technology. And then there's also, remember that ARP, CARES money, ESRS money, whatever you want to call it, in the budget that inflates the number a little bit. But that covers revenue and expenses, so it's kind of an offset in your budget. It does still call for a 3.5% increase in your millage, which is .7618 mills. You've seen this all before. I did get updated median household values. It stands at 152.4. For the median household, that would be $116 tax increase. This is a history of your millage rates. You've seen this also before, just indicating that with this tax increase, you'll still be below the 18-19 rate when you, previous board decided to drop the millage rate significantly. And again, preceding that, you had four years of no tax increase. Then you decreased taxes, and now you've slowly started to get back to where you were previously.
So, we're still, we're still under where we were, you know, really for, you know, the previous four years where we were holding it steady.
You're under your 15-16 rate even, so.
Right, right.
That's significant amount of time.
So, even though the millage has gone up in the last two years, our cost structures, you know, being able to operate the district at those millage rates, I think we've done very good things to manage our cost structure. And, you know, even with, costs of everything else goes up, cost of salaries, you know, because of contractual issues, you know, everything from, you know, energy and, you know, facilities costs. So, I think we've done a good job of managing to those costs. The, you know, I had thought about this a lot. I know we've gotten, you know, a lot of input from people regarding any increase to the millage rate. So, I do look at it historically, and we're still operating from a revenue standpoint, you know, lower millage rate than previous, and our, while our costs, you know, have been going up. The thing that we, I think there's been some, you know, ideas floating around that our general fund balance is high, and that we should just continue to erode that, you know, and, you know, to offset these tax increases. But I do believe that as we've been going through a lot of these strategic planning issues, the facility studies that we've done, we have seen the future around facilities and capital investments. And in the future, we're looking at some really, I think, you know, some pretty big bills in terms of maintaining, even if our choice in terms of facilities plan is to stick with what we have, we're still looking at some very big investments into capital projects just to maintain, because we've taken our eye off that. Over the last five years, we've really cut back on our maintenance of our facilities. And so, the one thing, and this may be a separate discussion, a separate meeting, but that general fund balance that we have sitting around has been allocated towards Peasers. We haven't been using it. The one thing we should discuss in some upcoming meetings is how to reallocate that to these bills, these investments we've seen that are going to be critical moving forward to maintain some of our facilities. I think that's where that has to be earmarked for. I don't recommend depleting that to offset our operating costs. Otherwise, we're going to be in a situation, two to three years from now, where we're going to have to go out for referendum and pay for some of these capital projects. And I don't think that's responsible, okay? I think that's very reactionary. It doesn't show leadership, thinking forward on what our financial requirements are going to be. So, I'm, I'm, you know, nobody likes to increase the millage rate. I think, looking historically, we're still under the millage rate that we were, you know, going many years back. But I also think that it's financially responsible to look forward into the capital investments that we're going to have to make, and think about those today, and reserve some of this fund balance to pay for those expenses.
And our auditor indicated to us that it was in our best interest to keep that fund balance at a healthy percentage, and the recommendation was to raise it to the index this year from our auditor.
Yeah, you know, and if you do fall behind, if your fund balance does go down, it starts to impact other things. Not only your ability to fund your capital programs, but also things like eventually, if it comes to a very low level, your bond ratings, and then you're going to see more expense in that area also.
Mr. McCoslin, could you please give the community a little bit of, and I know you've done this already, but just an outlook, two years, three years, roughly four years, of what we're looking at, if there's a deficit, or will expenditures and revenues eventually meet?
They will eventually meet. I think when I did the presentation back in April, it was probably two years out where they met. But we did so well with the budget this year, we may be able to, if we continue to see assessment value increases and don't have large decreases, and we can keep spending under control, especially in the area of staffing, that could happen much more quickly. You could, you could see that intersection probably within the next year or two. It really depends what happens with the strategic plan, what options we choose down the road, whether we're going to build a new building, whether we're going to maintain the buildings we have. All those choices will play into what happens down the road with those projections. will play into what happens down the road with those projections. But it certainly looks, I think, much better now than it did when I walked in the door in July.
And I think, you know, that's a, that's a, a good point. You know, the budget that's been built for this year has been fundamentally different than before, going off of the zero base budget. In, you know, the past few years, we came into approving the budget and, you know, at a 2 million dollar deficit, 3 million dollar deficit, or in those areas. And then all of a sudden, magically, we came out on the positive side. And, and this very, this year, COVID had a lot to do with that because of our expenses. But in, in many of the previous years, we kind of came into this in a similar situation. We were forecasting these huge deficits, and all of a sudden magically, they, they went away. In my view, is that's poor planning up front, okay? And it's the way we went about the budget planning process. We've got a different process right now, started from scratch, zero base budget. Just in terms of the process we went through to come up with the budget, I have a lot of confidence that this is going to be a lot closer. It may be a little bit, you know, we may be a little bit to the plus side, a little bit to the negative side from what we're forecasting. But I don't expect us to come out and say, all of a sudden, wow, magically now, we're 2 million dollars on the plus side. And, and by the way, that's, when we're sitting at this point in time for next school year, that's a bad thing, okay? Because we're looking to make decisions that, you know, we want to know, are we going to be 2 million in the hole, or 2 million on the plus, plus side? So just because we finished the year a lot more positive than what we thought, it's, it, it actually is a bad thing, because it causes us to make the wrong decisions at this point in time.
Well, it also caused us to just keep the money where it was, and we never really asked the questions like Mr. McCoslin was asking. What do we need it for?
Right.
Like, what are these expenses for? What is this line item for? Why are the principals or the administration asking for this line item? And getting into the weeds in a lot of these budget areas, like a lot of businesses throughout the country do with zero base budget. So I applaud you for it. I know it is a large task to take on. So, that's good. And I agree with Mr. Christensen, we shouldn't see a variance of, all of a sudden, come April, hey, guess what, we're going to be 1.3 million dollars, bless, well, then that's 1.3 million dollars that was misled somewhere to us, and that's something that we can't continue to do that was happening prior.
The comment I would make twofold is, I, I wouldn't mind if you found that 1.3 million dollars. I don't think that's a bad thing. I understand Kim, Mrs. Walsh's point, but I think that you look, looking at already a personnel increase of 3.17 million dollars now, and we have other issues coming in the near future, I don't, I don't understand how we're going to get closer to the two numbers if we have other things to spend money on next year. So I mean, I, I don't know, I'm sure you've thought about it. I don't know that you put it to paper at this point, because it's so far out.
Well, I think there's, you have capital reserve, and I think you've, you've put that away wisely. I think it's just a matter of building a plan, so how you're going to spend that over the next five, 10 years. We have started to put something like that together. It, it takes a long time to build it, because we want to know how old your systems are, when we think they're going to need replaced, what's their useful life. Those things all factor into it. So it takes a lot of data collection at first to build those plans. And also, I mean, I'll talk about it in a little bit, but Mr. Christensen's already alluded to it. You have money sitting in your general fund that has been either committed or assigned for different purposes, and we need to have the discussion about whether they've been committed or assigned to the proper places. I have some recommendations on that, and I think there's a slide coming up here and a couple of slides to show you that. This next slide, basically, you've seen also, but it's been updated based on the millage rate and the new assessed values. You can see what happens if you do less, no increase, or you do a lesser than the index increase, what happens to your budget and the deficit. This is nothing new, more for the public. I'm not going to spend a lot of time there, but you know that the majority of your revenue comes from local sources, and of that, it's real estate taxes that creates the majority of your revenue. Expenditures also, the bulk of your expenditures go for direct instructional or support services that directly support the instructional program. Debt service and extracurriculars make up the lesser portion of your budget. Again, no surprise here, personnel makes up 75% of your budget. We've had that discussion. We know that your teaching staff is, 80% of them are sitting at the top of the scale. You know, that will change over the next few years, which will also assist you with your costs decreasing over time, just by attrition, by having higher level, higher-paid teachers replaced with lower-paid teachers. How do we cut that deficit? We've talked about this a little bit. We used the zero base budgeting process. Everyone got taken back to zero, had to justify everything, put in their budget. We implemented a detailed staffing budget. My budget has every staff member in the district and all the supplemental positions put in it. And as things change and adjust, just like we had some discussions earlier in executive session about staffing, those changes are, be able to, we can adjust and shift our budget so that we can get an accurate picture of what the actual costs for staffing are. We also based our budget on actual expenditures in prior years and trends from prior years. We didn't do a budget to budget. So by looking at actuals, it gives you a better picture of where you're actually spending the money and where the variances were. One of the tasks we'll have at the end of this year is to say, okay, we budgeted this amount in these line items, there was a variance, why did that occur? Trying to look at that every year and say, okay, as we analyze where we actually did good in budgeting, where we didn't do as good, it'll help us tighten it up in future years. We did make adjustments based on the COVID effect, as I put here. There were some higher tuition numbers we had to adjust for this year. We're hoping that those return to normal next year. And obviously, we had lower than anticipated substitute staffing costs because we were remote a good portion of the year. So that allowed us to allocate those funds to some other resources that we were able to address. We have some increased revenue projections for next year. We used the new assessed values. We used collection rate trends. We were a little slightly more aggressive without getting too aggressive on the collection rates, but we used the past seven years and saw that your collection rates were coming in much higher every year than what you were anticipating. Therefore, we could make some pretty good assumptions that your collection rate was probably going to be slightly higher than you predicted in the past. And then we've also implemented a new leasing rotation purchase for technology, which has helped us purchase large volumes of technology and keep it cost-effective within our budget. We have made some staffing changes. We do anticipate the retirement of three teachers and eight pair educators. Those are all still in the budget to be replaced. We also have some retirements that we're not replacing. There's one part-time nurse, one maintenance position, and one administrator that's anticipated. We have the elimination of one police position, and then we have some additional positions, the assistant high school principal that you authorized to be advertised for, the assistant athletic director, and one additional security guard. So those make large impacts in your budget as well. We have some technology purchases that are significant. The number is actually coming in slightly lower than the number I have up here, but that just happened as of today. But we're anticipating buying about 1,400, that shouldn't say Chrome, but we're going to replace the Chromebooks with PC laptops for high school students, and we're replacing 300 Chromebooks at the, at the IMS level. Again, using the rotation, we're going to stagger the rotation of the leases between three and four years. We have built a 10-year staggered rotation out there so that we can get it even in your budget within the next couple of years, so that you don't see large fluctuations from one year to the next. The refresh program should help us keep staffing and student devices up to date. As your general fund budget stands right now, we're at 93.7 million for revenues, 94.2 for expenditures, a deficit of 477,000 dollars. And there you can see the fund balance numbers as they exist. A little bit more of a breakdown for the fund balance. I have made some shifts. Currently, you have about 12 million dollars for retiree benefits sitting there. I'm suggesting you move about 6 million of that from retiree benefits to the capital projects line item. That way, you, you can do some of the updates that you know you have to do, especially at IMS and NAMS, with regards to HVAC, air handling. There are some ADA issues that have to be addressed. So you are going to have a significant outlay, and this will allow you to do those without going to borrow more funds. And then we have some assigned numbers that, remember, we moved from the capital reserve, which were not appropriately placed there, and we moved them into the general fund. I just transferred those line items from that fund back to the general fund. Questions about that? If we can have a further discussion whether you like those classifications, at some point, it will require your action to commit those funds at the levels that, that you wish. So we'll have a further discussion in June about that. Again, we've talked about the summer projects. Mr. Hayes just spent a long time talking about them, but there they are again. We're hoping to use a lot of the ESRS II money, in fact, most of the, all of the ESRS II's money on a lot of these projects that are going to be done this summer. Again, we can continue to make changes. Once this budget is approved tonight, we'll post it on the website. It'll be available at the district office for public review and inspection, comments. And then we will do the final adoption of the budget in June, and that's also when you will establish the tax rates. Questions?
Any other questions or comments? We did have a second, right?
You did.
All right, so, voting?
Voting is open. Motion carries.
Item two, under the finance committee, I move to authorize the bidding of the summer projects that we just discussed in the presentation by Kevin Hayes earlier.
I need a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Scowzo. Any questions or comments?
I actually do for Mr. McCoslin. In the numbers that Mr. Hayes gave us, I know we had discussed them at the last meeting, as to what the estimates were coming in at. How close is he with the bidding that we're going to approve tonight compared to the estimates that came in?
They're pretty close. I think the paving came in a little bit lower because we, we deferred a lot of the paving at the bus garage. So I still am very confident that, that almost all of that work can be done with the ESRS II money that we have coming in. In fact, in June, I'm going to do a little update on how we spent all the CARES and ESRS money, or plan to spend the future money, just so that you're aware of what that is.
Okay, that's, I just wanted to make sure that that's where it was coming from, and we were still on track. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments?
Voting is open. Motion carries.
Hey, I need a motion to adjourn this meeting as we move into the committee meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Spicuzza.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Christensen.
Voting is open. Motion carries.
Did you want it beforehand? Do you want it now? Oh, you, you stuck it in?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, we're moving into the committee meeting at this time. Are there any phone calls?
No. There are no calls.
I have no public comments.
I'm still circling. Are you circling still?
Nope, I just clicked the link and I'm good.
All right, are there any committee reports at this time?
I would like to report that Steel Center will be having their senior recognition night on June the 2nd, and I will be addressing the group at the Baldwin High School. And the AIU will be holding a recognition night for those of us who are going off the board. And the sad part is that after over 40 years, we will have no representative on the AIU board. No one elected this time. So that's it, really.
Any other committee reports?
Yes, I just wanted to report the diversity, equity, and inclusion committee met last Wednesday. We had another very productive meeting. We discussed our, our committee's mission, values, vision, and objectives, and confirmed those. And the other large part that came out of that is we've been working on putting together a student survey, well, two separate student surveys, one for IMS students, one for the high school students, as well as parent opt-out forms. And I believe the parent opt-out forms have already gone out. And we're looking forward to seeing what our students, seeing where our students are and where they feel we are, so we can start delving into that information and build from there.
Thank you. Any other?
I'm going to ask, were the student opt-out forms emailed? Because I have no email from Bethel Park High School in the last day.
They will be emailed, but I can't guarantee they've gone out yet.
Okay.
We just got them, you know, the final copy a little late last week.
Okay, that's what I want to make sure.
Okay, superintendent, report?
Thank you. Evening, everybody. First, I wanted to take the opportunity to give a shout out or real congratulations to the spring sports teams. Softball, baseball, boys' and girls' lacrosse, and boys' volleyball, all had great seasons and have made the playoffs. In fact, some of the games are even this evening while we speak. So we want to wish luck to our student athletes for, first, a congratulations for a great season and luck in your, in the playoffs. Also, I wanted to give a preemptive shout out to the students who'll be inducted in the National Honor Society tomorrow night. They certainly are, we are certainly most proud of their service, their scholarship, their leadership, and their character that have earned them a place in that esteemed association. And finally, I invited Mr. Cromie here this evening to talk to us a bit about his work and communications plans to date and moving forward, his ideas about continuing and expanding communications throughout the district. So I'm going to fire up your mic there and join in.
Yeah, I'm good. Can everyone hear me? Yeah, so obviously, this was a unique year. This was a year in which COVID impacted the, the school district at every level, and the way we communicated was certainly no exception. We had a lot of, it was really interesting coming into a new system in the middle of a pandemic. Probably not the smartest move I've ever made, but it's been great. I've loved Bethel Park, and I've learned a lot. And so what we did, whenever we initially came, one of the first things we decided to do was to simplify things, make things as, as fundamental as possible. So what we tried to do was to focus on our social media efforts, certainly the website, and of course, through the constant crisis communication that we were forced, that the pandemic just dictated. So, so that's really what we've done for most of the year. I think the thing that I'm most proud of is when I came here, I think the social media culture was, was pretty rough. There was, it was, it could be a difficult time. And as the year has gone on, and we've continued to include a lot of positive stories for some of the things that have been happening here, I think what we've seen is that has abated quite a bit. And now we're starting to see some real positivity with regard to achievement here, and I think that's very exciting. We, one of the things we suspended, we do intend to bring back in the fall, will be the newsletter. The online newsletter is something that people have asked about. We just haven't had any opportunity, for the most part, we didn't, there were no extracurricular stories, which are typically what, what you fill those with, because teachers were so busy teaching in-person students and students at home. And so that's something that we definitely plan to bring back in the fall, whenever we have a more normal environment. And we will continue to work on, though, through social media and also our website. I think our web- I think our website, tucked to Lee Cristofano, he had a great word for it. He said it needs a good pruning. It probably needs more than that. And we have started, I've started talking with some of the principals, not just the building principals, but some of the people around here about ways that we can improve our website and different things we can do with it. I think I've heard some really interesting thoughts on it, and we will continue to kind of survey them. Also, last night, we had an opportunity for the student experience committee, and I plan to meet with some of the students, a group of students, to talk about the website from their perspective and some of the things that they would like to see on it, so that we're trying to include as many groups as possible. So through all that, I think what we, where we are is, I think we've, I do feel pretty good about where we are communicating wise, and certainly next year, we're going to make sure that we're, that everyone's feeling included and that everyone's feeling reached. So does anyone have any questions?
No, thanks for the update. I think maybe the reason why you're here, because I had gotten some, you know, quite a few comments over, you know, the last many months have been piling up. And, you know, I think that people did kind of develop, you know, this expectation around getting the emails. And, you know, I understand the social media, but you know, in the communication fields, the more outlets you have.
Certainly.
Just the less effective anyone is. So you're just, you're just forced to use more mediums to communicate. Because, you know, there's no one social media platform. There's no one medium to communicate. So if we can get back to also an email, I think there's still a lot of people in the community that rely on their email inbox to get their news.
Sure. Yeah, one of the things that's interesting is that you're, you're really giving a lot of the same news. It really, it centers around student achievement. That's really the foundation of what we're doing. That's, that's the one thing, if you look at it like concentric circles, it's, it's the one thing that impacts everyone. And it's what we're doing. We're a school district. And I think we're trying to reach students on their terms, but even if you reach students, they're much more likely to get that information through Instagram or Twitter. Their parents are more likely to get it through Facebook. And, but there's that demographic. We have 80% of the people, as we saw through the Hayes study, that don't have children in our school but who live here and who are interested in what's happening in Bethel Park. And we need to make sure that we're communicating with them, and we're aware of that. And I think hopefully, like I said, next year, as we have more stories to share and more good news to share, we can use that vehicle to reach them.
Yeah, the, I like the email personally, not because there's lots of stories on it, but it's an information source. So for example, I would just scroll to the bottom to see what's going on during the week. And that's something that you don't really have to change, other than putting dates in it. I mean, rather than a calendar, it would say, okay, the baseball game is here and, you know, that kind of a thing. So although there was a lot of repetition in that newsletter, week to week, it was a source of information, not news stories for me. You know what I mean? So that, and I knew, like, okay, sometimes there's community news, sometimes there's high school news, sometimes there's IMS. So it was that kind, kind of thing for, for me. And I'm old, so I like that kind of. I like that email and I like that, that scheduled kind of like, okay, I get, I know at the top of the page is new news, and then as I'm going through, it's going to be each school, and then there's going to be events at the bottom. So I think that's what people are asking about.
Sure.
So if you can set that up again, I think that would be fabulous.
Yeah.
And Mrs. Dobis, last night at the student experience subcommittee, Mr. Cromie was given that too, is, I mean, there seemed to be a lot of teachers in that room that were very specific on that. I know that email's there every week, and I know that I can get the events situation. The other thing that was talked about that, you know, he was very eager to figure out is how to get it out to the rest of the community, not just people that have it in school, have a child in school.
Well, you could, you could always get it if you were a community member. You just have to email and.
Right, so I mean, that, that was, that was another way that, to get the communication out.
Yeah, and we've talked about even like, Ms. Walsh Turner talked about creating a link on the, on the municipality's website and stuff like that, where everyone can feel that way. And remember too, when you're, another way to reach them is through Chronicles. Now, that's less immediate, but that's for people who aren't, who aren't likely to go through their email, people like my father, you know, but they would definitely read a quarterly magazine. So we do have a lot of vehicles, and we're trying to get as much information as we can. As, as I said, I think for most of this year, it's been, it's been a challenge just to fill up Chronicles, frankly. So, but next year, as we reach kind of, hopefully, some sort of normality, I think that we will be able to certainly reinstitute that. Because I have heard from a number of people, just like what you're saying, that they like having that information. So we'll do that.
So maybe after the meeting, maybe you and Ron and I could talk. We're doing something interesting where I work that kind of consolidates the information into a location that allows us to syndicate it through all kinds of different things, like email and the different social. So it, it won't add that much more work, but I don't want to bore everybody else with that here, so.
That'd be great.
And is it possible to change up what's written in the in-community and the Chronicles? It's usually the same write-up and that kind of.
What's?
No variety.
What's write-up do you mean? What specifically?
In-community and Chronicles.
Oh, I see.
They're always the same, same thing.
Oh, I'm.
There's no difference.
Okay, that's good to know. I contribute to.
There's a lot of stuff you could.
Right. Yep.
That's what I'm saying.
Yep.
Anything else for Mr. Cromie? Nope.
No, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, guys.
Let me circle back for a minute, somehow, maybe I should have had my glasses on. I missed track. Put them on the list of my congratulations for the athletic teams. And I was also noticing that we should shout out to the musical cast, because two of the stars sitting here in the audience tonight performed their spelling skills in the High School Musical this, this past, what, two weeks ago? Congratulations, folks, for a stellar performance. But, but to the cast and crew, it was hilarious, great show. We have four stars all around. And then my last piece of information is that we have already begun having conversations internally about the reopening plan for next year. One of the things we added to the mix recently was the state's expectations and what they're going to be looking for. They're actually looking for an updated health and safety plan about how you'll reopen. So the list, the list of things that we're addressing is starting to come together quite well. And I just, I know that you made that, that action last month to make sure we're back five days, and we're working very carefully on that process, and we're, we're going to be ready. And I'll give you another update again. Okay? But that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Scalzo?
Under curriculum committee, we have four items. First item, curriculum facilitators for 2021, 2022, school board. The board of school directors approves administration's recommendation to appoint the curriculum facilitators for the 2021, 2022 school year stipend amount listed per CBA.
Any questions or comments about that?
Item two, the board of school directors approves the administration's recommendation to provide the following elective courses which carry credit towards graduation with less than 18 students as of the spring course selection count, which are deemed essential to instructional activities.
Is Mr. Valani on, on here?
He's actually on YouTube.
Okay. Okay, well, Dr. O'Rourke, you want to step in here and?
Sure.
Can we send him? He just texted me. He said, we can send him a link. Can we send him the webex and he can get on?
Mrs. Wells is also online.
Who else? Mrs. Wells?
Mrs. Wells has, has worked with Mr. Valani.
Okay. Anybody, you want to talk?
Do you have, if you had questions about it? So this is, from what I understand, it's a pretty standard list that you'll get year to year. Some of the, some of the items on the list are there because they're feeder. The numbers might not reach 18, but to maintain the entire integrity of the foreign language program, for instance, we'll continue to offer the threes and the fours in the series to make sure that kids can make it all the way through the program. A few of these are introductory courses. For instance, the Theater Arts One, an introductory course, numbers are under 18, but again, an introductory course, we want to make sure we have that as an option or a pathway for students. So we want to maintain those introductory type courses as well. So that's the, sort of the spirit of the list, is what we're looking at.
And typically, the numbers increase as we.
Right.
That's correct. These are, these are electives.
Over the summer and as we get closer to the fall, people.
Correct.
Start to filter into those classes.
Correct. And annually, for anybody that, that doesn't remember from last year, annually, we bring these to the board, per policy, that there are certain courses that run under 18. And typically, what that generally means, as Dr. Walsh had basically said, is that a teacher is assigned to a course that may have a smaller group of students, but those often are introductory or prerequisites for the next level of courses. So we like to make the board aware of those courses annually.
And so this is the recommendation from the high school administration? That these are the ones that even though they're less than 18, that we should carry through this next year?
Correct. There were some courses that the high school administration, because they were less than 18 or had zero in them, that we've removed and gone forward with.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Are these courses typically on the list every year, year after year? Or do we just anticipate them?
Some of them, sure. Our higher level foreign language program courses are on the list annually. Some of our, the childcare program at the high school is typically on the list. Some of our, the computer application programs or the computer programming courses, they start on the list, but then it ends up where they, after the summer, end up having a few more students in them, so they might not be at 18. But there was nothing on this list that was, has never been on a list, if that makes sense. These are typical.
Okay.
Some of them, I think, have new names. Like the Treble Choir, I think it, when we approved the new course selection, I have a, I think that that's a new name for that course.
Okay.
Okay, any more questions about that? Okay.
Okay. Number three, the board of school directors approves the administration's recommendation to approve the change to the 2021, 2022 school calendar.
I actually would like to have Mr. Valani.
I'm, as a parent of a class of a student in 2022, I'm okay with the change.
The, if you would like, the, the change of the calendar is based on the request from the high school administration to move graduation from Saturday morning till Friday afternoon. So our Friday evening, I apologize, evening. So what that does is graduation would now be on June 3rd of 2022, rather than June 4th of 2022. And that's, that's what the request is, is to make that change on the district calendar.
But do you know what the rationale is?
I do. The rationale is, we're going to be in the stadium, and then we would have a rain day for Saturday morning in the, in the gymnasium, because a lot of students want to be in the stadium, and then there would always be, there would be a backup. I know this because my child was on that committee. But that is the rationale.
Okay, item number four, discussion only.
Well, wait a second. Are there, do, any of those three items should we not have on the consent agenda next week? All three items?
For curriculum facilitators, I think we should hold that one out, because I have a conflict of interest, since my wife is named on that.
Okay.
So I, I don't want to abstain from all of them.
Amy, what do you, can he just abstain if we put it on consent agenda? Or should we just make it separate on the?
I would just put it for a young facilitators, not on the consent.
Okay. All right, the high school elective courses and the change in the school calendar should be on the consent agenda then? Okay, sorry, Mr. Scalzo.
Item four, discussion only, AP program.
Yes, can I, can I take over there?
Sure, absolutely.
So the board was aware a few weeks ago, as the media released the rankings of national high schools based on AP performance and student achievement, and we collectively disappointed in Bethel Park's ranking in comparison. So we put together some information for the board, and I have at your desks tonight a revised copy of what I sent you last Friday with just a little bit more information than last time. That sort of shows our history with the AP program, our successes with it, the growth of the AP program. Clearly, the biggest factor last year in our performance, we were offering more students, more tests, but the achievement didn't, wasn't commensurate, of course, because it was such a different testing experience last year. They didn't, didn't do as well. Hence, our performance went down. But the larger point is, is that we have been increasing students participating in the AP program and additional tests being taken, that in conjunction with additional credits being available and earned by students in the college and high school program from Pitt or CCAC. With that bit said, I did give the board in that graph at the bottom of the first page, some comparisons. And that points to the work we have to do here to try and get our performance improved. It speaks to what our benchmarking schools and our neighboring schools are doing in each of these categories upon which those rankings are determined. And we see room for growth, particularly in the AP performance. So one of the things I'd like to see happen is for the district to get involved in the National Math Science Initiative, acronym NIMZI, which is opening up another three-year grant cycle for school districts to participate. This is heavily focused on teacher professional development for teaching advanced courses and feeder courses of advanced courses, AP courses and their feeder courses. So this is a great opportunity for us to pursue and to get support from this initiative. Some of our neighboring districts have participated. The word we get back from those teachers that have participated in NIMZI have said it's the best professional development they've ever had. I think that speaks volumes to what we can accomplish with NIMZI. So that's primarily my focus will be to get us involved in that, to get our teachers' professional development like they've never had before. And it also provides support for students too, with their own, like Saturday study sessions, et cetera, that are now available through the NIMZI program. So we're, we're going to point all efforts towards that. And I think it, it honors the students that are committed to the program. It's not artificially inflating participation for students that aren't making that choice. We're not forcing kids into it. We're just making everybody that's in it better. If that makes sense.
Yeah. Is this, can this be shared with the public, this handout that you gave us?
Sure.
I mean, I think this is really good. And wow, that fourth column over that, of that benchmarking table, that ranks, that, that gives our percentage of students with a three plus taking these AP scores at 19%? And most of these other schools are around 50%? I mean, we have, we have an abysmal AP performance. Terrible.
So to, just to clarify this, we don't misunderstand.
Am I reading that right?
You are, but just to be clear, it's 19% of the whole high school.
Okay.
19% of the student population.
Oh, okay.
On the AP test.
Okay.
Okay? Which, so we had 24% of our whole school take an AP class. 19% got a three or better on those tests. Okay?
Ah, okay.
So there is a distinguish there. The difference is about 5% of the student population didn't succeed.
Okay.
So we need.
I thought it was 19% of the 24% is of total.
Of total.
Okay, sorry. Should have withheld my emotional comments.
24 is of total, and 19 is of total also, yes.
Okay.
The main goal is to increase participation.
Well, participation and success.
And success.
Yeah, but, but the NIMZI program is really focused on, you know, rigorous courses, teaching rigorous courses and succeeding with rigorous courses, so it's a professional development piece.
Okay.
How soon can we get involved with that?
So we're meeting this later. So we're meeting, uh, this later this week with our teachers and met representatives from NIMSE. The administrators already did meet with them. Things looked good. They were ready to move. And let's get the teachers on board, which is, we're hoping to get that done this week. And then we'll provide them with some preliminary data, uh, to set some benchmarks for us. And then we're, then we're good to roll for the beginning of the summer. A lot of the PD happens, um, throughout the summer.
So we'll be able to show possible growth as early as next year?
Yes. And, and the literature I did provide you, it's quite lengthy, and I hope you don't mind me, you know, printing this and giving it to you as a take home, does speak to the success of the NIMSE program in districts, uh, and how they, but they've been able to accomplish both, uh, nationally and even more locally here in Western Pennsylvania. There's a page there that talks about how some of the schools that have participated have done, uh, after, before and after. Uh, so there's a lot of indications. To me, it's, it's powerful. The, the data is powerful to, to bring us the kind of growth that we want to, that we want to see for our students. So to your point, Mr. Christiansen, we can definitely make that available.
Yeah, okay. I think that'd be really good. And, and, uh, yeah, again, sorry for my, uh, e- emotional comment. I didn't understand the number. I should have asked that, but, rather than assume, but, okay. So it, it's not as bad as what I was, was, uh, thinking, but you're right. The focus is on participation. You know, getting more people to take AP classes and the exams.
Right. One of the things that the NIMSE grant would do for us for three years is it would reimburse kids fifty percent of the cost of taking the AP test if they get a three or a better. So there's a little bit of a carrot out there to do well.
Yeah.
And it does lift the burden slightly off of, you know, families for kids to take more than one test. We, we really weren't in a position tonight to talk about other measures of consideration, but there are other things we could consider doing to get increased participation in the tests, more percentage of the kids, uh, taking or passing the test. Uh, and, and I think that's down the road. Right now, my, my efforts are going to be moved to getting NIMSE in place, getting that professional development happening, and then we'll talk about next steps after that.
Right. Okay. Perfect.
Dr. Walsh, what's the average cost of the, uh, AP test for a student?
I think it's ninety-five dollars. Thank you. Yeah, ninety-five. Yes. Correct.
Dr. Walsh, with the schools listed, uh, for the benchmark schools that you have there, do any of the other schools have dual enrollment, dual enrollment programs, college and high school?
I'd have to investigate that. I'm going to guess yes because they're pretty commonplace, but let me, let me verify that before I respond and make a big mistake.
I'm curious to see if there's competition within the school itself between the dual enrollment and then the AP.
Yeah, let, let me find out.
Okay. Oh, I, I do have one more thing to mention. Maybe this is prob, maybe this would be better when the curriculum committee for the strategic plan meets, but I don't know if there's a possibility of this, if there could possibly be a, uh, an AP curriculum committee built among all of the AP teachers, coming together, uh, sharing ideas. Because even though there are different content areas, different methods and styles of teaching on the delivery part of it, if they could sit down and collaborate and share those ideas, sometimes the content doesn't matter. It's, it's more of the delivery. And, and some of the ideas that they come up with in the classroom can carry over to other classrooms, to other content areas. It's, it's a thought, it's an idea. Maybe that would be better for discussion for that meeting, that, that subcommittee meeting.
Yeah, thank you.
And, and as Mr. Christiansen has asked about, can we make this part of the strategic plan data? I'd like this in the folder.
Yes, for sure.
For the curriculum committee.
Yeah, for sure. Okay, that's all I had on that topic, Mr. Scalzo.
Thank you. Thank you for all of the data, too.
Yeah, it's really good, really good.
Okay, Mr. McGregor?
Okay, under Personnel Committee, there are five items listed there. Let me go over them one by one. Uh, number one, approval of extra duty responsibility program. Um, there are three positions, one at the high school, two at the middle school, listed.
This is for this year right now, right? This is still, this is for this year. Okay.
Yes, correct.
Any, any comments, questions? Okay.
Okay, number two is the acceptance of resignations. Um, we're looking at one administrative and one classified, or a few classified positions.
Any questions?
Yes, uh, I? I do have a question. Uh, particularly, uh, but, uh, health services nurse. Are we expecting to replace that, uh, person?
So right now, we have part-time at Washington. However, we have two full-time floaters. So the thought process is, you know, open up a full-time at Washington. So Washington will now go from a part-time to a full-time and hope that one of the floaters would bid into it.
Okay. So do we have, uh, nurse in all of our buildings? Or how's that working right now?
There's a rotation, and, uh, I believe Lori could probably, I know she's on the line, can probably speak to it, um, in regards to the rotation. I don't have the exact rotation right now on there.
So I kind of guess what, uh, Mr. Nagel was talking about is, um, since we have those two floaters, if one replaces the part-time as a full-time, that leaves us with one floater and, uh, potential for a, a half floater or another full-time floater.
So the way the contract works is that the floaters are up to the administration how to use the floaters. So that's something that we would collect the data and figure out, you know, do we use that floater on a nurse? Do we use it on a computer pair? Do we use it on, you know, an instructional aid? They're all part of that, that group. So that's something that administration's going to look into and see how we use the floater based on the contract.
Thank you very much.
Um, Mr. Nagel, this is Lori Sutton. I can answer your question also. Uh, we have thirteen, uh, total nurses, four are certified school nurses, uh, who hold the caseload, and the remaining health services nurses are in all of the buildings. So we still are fully staffed and, and as, um, Anthony just stated, we would have one floater, uh, nurse if one transfers to begin the school year. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, item number four is appointment of personnel. Um, we're talking about one, two, well, long-term substitutes. Any questions or comments under this agenda item? Okay, uh, number five, and last one, approval of leave of absence. So we're talking about, um, one person, um, and it's effective May twelfth to May thirty-first. We're talking about, um, one employee. Any questions or comments?
Okay, is there any item here of the five items that we, that you want to hold out of the consent agenda? Okay, Mr. McCoslin, all five items can go in the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Christiansen?
So on the Finance Committee, uh, I'm going to group items one through three together. Any comments on those standard financial reports? None? Okay. Item number four, uh, PSBA membership dues renewal. Uh, I just had a question on this. Couple of years ago, we upgraded the package to, I think it's like the premium package for PSBA that gives, you know, training, some other resources. This is the same, same as, that's that same level? No change to that?
Yes.
Okay. Any comments from anybody on this?
I'll, I'll just say thank you for making that upgrade because the accessibility of the administrative regulations is a real support piece for, for the administrative team. So, I appreciate you keeping that moving.
Good.
That's my, that was my comment too, Barry. The policies have been moving to be upgraded to the, where we needed them to be several years ago, based on that PSBA. So it's made administration and part of, you know, just the policies in general reviewing with them a whole lot easier.
Yeah, I, I think you could argue there's actually a cost savings overall, just because of the, you know, extra maybe legal review and, and our own HR work to.
And also, also with the turnover, um, in December of the school board, there's so many, um, courses and in-service that people can just access now to, uh, learn about running the school board and, and different kinds of information.
Right, but it's, and it's been helpful as we've changed these policies. I've been able to go on and watch a half hour, she, like she said, things so that we know exactly where the changes are coming and why.
Right. Yeah, good. Good. Uh, item number five, approval of the Steel Center for Career and, and Technical Education budgets. So, uh, this is, um, in the public content, I think in here we've identified the full operating budget and the, and the Bethel Park portion is fifty-two thousand?
For the administrative functions of the, of the Steel Center. You get billed for your students to attend the VOTAC. The increase in the budget is about three percent.
Okay. Uh, item number six, purchasing of buses and vans. So I know every year we retire or depreciate, retire and purchase new, um, buses. This is just kind of normal.
Yeah, this comes from the Capital Reserve, and we are purchasing these. We didn't, we had, we had permission to bid them, but we, um, decided that the cost from the Coast Stars or Sourcewell contract, in this case it was Sourcewell, I apologize, um, was a very good price. So we decided to opt, to avoid bidding and use the state contracted through Sourcewell for these buses and one Lyft van to be replaced next year. And it would be paid out of the Capital Reserve money.
Okay. Uh, let's see. The four oh three B, item number seven, four three B, investment provider. I think this is just one of many that we approved that are a part of the options.
You, you approved one other. I've been meeting with some of the four oh three B providers out there to, to kind of assess their level of service for our teachers. I'm trying to find, um, quality providers that can give, especially as we start to hire younger staff, um, good advice and good sound, uh, strategies for the future because their retirement system is not going to be the system that, uh, people that are currently in the system are going to retire under. So I think having some good people on staff to help our staff, you know, plan financially into their future is a good, good thing to have. So I've been seeking out some, what I think are quality providers and adding them to our list.
Okay. Okay. Item number eight, uh, approval of proposal. Now, this is to do a, uh, PSBO, uh, audit of, uh, technology. Uh, I think this is a great idea, by the way, to have kind of an outside view of not only evaluating our hardware investments, but, you know, how we're staffing and structuring, you know, to make sure that we as a district are investing the right amounts into technology. Uh, and I think we've really all become aware of that this last year. But this, this audit and this review, that's what we're asking for approval here, of ten thousand dollars to come in and do this assessment or audit of our IT systems, the technology, the hardware, the structure, how we've set up the organization to support. I think all those are part of the proposal that I saw. Um, I don't know if there's anything else that you want to add, but I think this is a fantastic idea.
No, I think you've covered it very well. Yeah.
I have a question. Um, when I was looking through it, it seems to focus a lot on, um, the administrative technology and the business technology. And I was just wondering, does this audit also, or, uh, yeah, does this audit also include the educational, um, L, L, LMS system and things like that? Because I, I didn't really see much of that in the description.
Yeah, they'll be reviewing all the different software products that we use.
Okay. And, um, is there a, a committee also that, I know at one point we were going to have a technology committee created. Is there, is there that also to add to this, or is this just all, is this separate?
I don't know where, I don't know where, where you at with the tech committee?
We, uh, we met a couple of times.
We met a couple of times to review the, um, the student, uh, technology choices, um, and then agreed that at this time, um, we would, uh, roll the actual technology committee work into the facilities committee, um, when the facilities committee began meeting. And I think that, uh, at first, I don't see that, but I think that first meeting is next week.
Okay, so there's not a, so there's not a separate technology or LMS committee or something like that?
Not at this time.
Okay.
But the fact that PSBO is doing this at other districts around the state is, i- it's good visit, it's like a, you know, kind of a report card or a health check, just to see, are, are we doing things, you know, kind of the, the best of what everybody else is doing also? If our takeaway, we end up with a half a dozen things that we could improve on because, you know, other districts are doing certain things better than us, this is a great investment. See, item number nine, uh, approval of the, uh, Follett Asset Manager. And both of these things are, both nine and ten are related to this Follett Asset Manager and Follett Destiny Library Manager. Um, could you just explain a little bit around what these things are?
Sure. Um, so we've been, uh, this, I think, is our eighth year one-to-one. And when we started it, we had to try to figure out how to keep track of devices in the hands of students, um, where they were leaving the district and then coming back. And so that was grade seven through twelve, initially seven and eight. And so, um, actually our librarian facilitator, Paul Novak, came up with a way to, um, create, um, a collection of Chromebooks, like a collection of Tom Sawyers, and, um, catalog them within the library system to keep track of them. And that worked pretty well, um, both at the high school and Independence Middle School, until we got to the point where, um, we reached this year. And, and this year, the problem we have is that Chromebooks are, um, coming and going everywhere. And we stood out on the curb and handed them out, um, to cars as they drove through the parking lot in Washington in March, just so we could get them in the hands of students so that they could be, uh, able to participate in the online learning activities. And, um, and so now we need to be able to track Chromebooks at all the buildings. And we need to be able to merge them from, uh, the, uh, five elementaries into Neil, and then from sixth grade at Neil back into the five elementaries and first grade. And so that process is a little more complex than, uh, just a set of, uh, Tom Sawyers in, uh, Follett. And so the, um, library, Follett has a product called Asset Manager, and we looked at that eight years ago, but it was very expensive. And, uh, in the intervening time, it's, it's become a lot more affordable. And, um, we believe that, uh, this is going to help us, um, streamline that, uh, process of managing those devices across multiple buildings.
So this, I mean, just to kind of summarize what it does, it keeps track of each device, device ID, who has it, where it's located?
Yes.
And tells you how to get it back or, you know, who has it?
Yes, and it also, uh, take care of the process of allowing us to assign loaners and then retrieve the loaners whenever the student's device is repaired.
Okay.
So, and we would be using this not just for student devices, but also for staff devices because now we have, um, we're putting staff devices in the hands of teachers, and we want to be able to keep good track of those, especially so we can turn them back in at the end of the leasing cycle.
Right. Oh, that's a good point, that, yeah, we're not just, you know, scrapping them now. We actually have to return the assets. So it becomes very incumbent on us to know where they are at the end of the lease cycle. Okay.
The, the second item on that, uh, that is, um, can I talk about that a little bit?
Yeah. Just a high-level summary of what it does.
Okay, so.
Not how it does it.
So we, so we've been using Follett Destiny for a long time. Uh, that's what they use to check books in and out in the library. But, uh, we're looking to move them, move the, uh, the service into the cloud. Currently, it sits on a server in our data center. And, uh, we would be bringing the Follett Asset Manager, the prior one we just talked about, online in the cloud. And at the same time, we would be then moving our existing. And at the same time, we would be then moving our existing library system into the cloud. And so both products would be cloud-based. And I think it comes with a couple of more minor features. It would be updated all the time, but more importantly, we shed the risk of managing that security on that server to Follett. And so at that point in time, we count on them to keep us safer and reduce the exposure in our data center to a server that is ported to the outside. Because you can go to destiny.bpsc.org and you can pull up our library system, which means it's coming from within our walls. So you'll still be able to do that. It'll probably be a different URL, but it won't be coming from Bethel, it'll be coming from Follett, wherever their data center is.
I guess, what value does it provide? You just told us how it does it, kind of. What does it do? What, how does it fix our business or protect our business? It sounds like that's what it does?
It protects our business because it reduces the risk exposure of having servers inside ported to the outside.
Okay.
And it gets one step closer to moving everything into the cloud.
To the cloud, okay. Okay, good.
When this, when this number 10 uses the word library, are we talking about a real library, like our libraries in our schools? Is that what you're talking about? Okay. Like books?
Yes.
Checking out books?
Yes, the scanner, yes.
All right.
Okay, good. Number 11, approval of the purchase of IT equipment. So maybe this comes right back to you also, Ron. So this is the replacement of of laptops at the high school level, which are going to be Dell. I guess they're all Dell, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
We're going to be replacing the Chromebooks at the high school currently with Dell laptops for grades nine through 12, and replacing Chromebooks with Chromebooks at the IMS level.
Just half of the Chromebooks at IMS, because the other half are good for one more year.
And they'll fall into the rotation schedule that we've developed.
Okay. Okay. And then the, item 12, the approval of the technology lease agreement, that is to enable?
That is to, that equipment that we're purchasing in item 11 is now going to be a lease, and those are the numbers for the lease and the rates for the lease.
Okay.
Is there any transition needed in terms of in-service for students and/or teachers to go from laptops, or from Chromebooks to laptops?
Well, there's definitely going to be a little bit of a learning curve. However, students currently use PCs, except their desktop PCs in the classroom. And so instead of being desktop PCs, they'll be PCs they carry with them. And they're running Windows 10. And so just like with the teachers that received the new two-in-one devices in K6, you know, there was some, some of them, you know, grabbed them and ran with them, and others kind of like are suffering from shell shock because it's like, well, I want my desktop computer. And, you know, I think that we're trying to make this transition easy for them, and they're coming along. And the students will be the same way, but students are pretty good at helping each other. Not that teachers aren't, that teacher, I think the knowledge flow is a little quicker among students in a situation like that. But we'll certainly be putting out frequently asked questions, and we'll be helping the pairs at the high school understand how they have to effectively work with the students to solve problems that are bound to crop up.
So I know that I asked this when you did this at the elementary school, were you going to let them keep the old device while they're transitioning to the new device? And the response was yes.
Well, yes for teachers.
Till the end of this year, and then you're going to take them away? So for this transition, is it going to be like, we're going to be given this new one at the beginning of next year, and the old one's going to be gone?
That's our hope.
And so, when are we planning to get these laptops, right?
And that's why that's our hope, because.
They'll come in after July 1st.
Yeah, the supply chains are tightening, and we're hoping that by getting these approved in advance and putting Dell on notice, that they'll reserve them for us and be ready to ship them post-July 1.
So, you don't think we need to have the audit before we do this purchase?
Well, I mean, yeah, that's a good question, you know, are we buying the right stuff? You know, I guess the, you know, when I look at the purchase, maybe this is something to address, is we've talked a lot about having consistency in our IT landscape, but yet we're going to go out and buy a whole bunch of Windows machines and a whole bunch of Chromebooks, which means that for the next four years, we're still going to have a very, you know, heterogeneous IT environment. So, I mean, what, why are we doing that?
We had a number of conversations about that. And I think the, it boils down to two things. It boils down to what's needed, and it boils down to budget. And so if we look at the needs of students in grades K through eight, and this is you know, talking to teachers and talking to students, it seems as though the Chromebooks are meeting the need there very well. But if we look at the needs of high school students, Chromebooks are starting to not meet the need for advanced applications for high school kids. And so we had originally talked about doing PCs in grade seven through 12, but the cost differential between a PC and a Chromebook is almost twice. And so, you know, in trying to keep that budgetary number within the amount that was originally budgeted for this process, it seemed like the best combination was to purchase PCs for high school students and half of the Chromebooks, and not all of them because of budget again, for grade seven and eight, and the other half next year, I'm sorry, for grade eight, and the other half next year for grade seven. And so, I understand, I want us to move towards consistency too. We'll be supporting the Chrome browser on the Windows PCs, which will help them transition. And I think that eventually, at some point, we start moving back towards Microsoft, you know, in terms of other tools that are available through Microsoft, such as Microsoft Exchange Mail and Microsoft OneDrive, which we already have up and running, and Microsoft SharePoint. But that's not a one-year transition. That's probably a four- or five-year transition, because it took us four or five years to bring Google online and get everybody used to it and working well with it. So I think, you know, it's certainly open for discussion. We can talk about it more, but we felt that this was the right place to go at this time.
I have a question. Should we be doing this right now if we're having somebody come in and look at the whole process of what we're doing?
That's what we were just talking about. That's what led to the, you know, the question I just asked, and I think Pam had brought it up, and I mean, what's, especially, I mean, on either of these, is there a necessity right now, or?
Well, the current crop of Chromebooks, the Dell 3120, is end of support by Google in September of 2021. And so after that point in time, they no longer are eligible for updates, security updates or feature updates. And so then they won't, I would say that, you know, after one or two updates after that, they'll start to have problems. It'll be difficult to use them. So, could we start the new year with them and then transition to, you know, new devices sometime in the year? I think we could. I think that would be very, very challenging to manage while school is in session. Because, you know, during the summer, if you distribute them mid-August, beginning of August, you're not interfering with daily operations of learning. Whereas, once you get school underway and you say, okay, everybody has to give up their device, or, hey, we're going to give you a new device, and then you have to bring back your old device at some point in time. Could we do it? Yes, but I think it presents a few challenges.
So this audit that we're having, that we will approve next week, it looks like it takes thirty days?
I think they're promised on June 30th.
June 30th?
Assuming everything's approved and, you know, they can commit.
The refresh cycle, the lease term on this is three years?
It's divided. There's a three-year lease and there's also a four-year lease. We divided them up so we can start to stagger the cycles over the next three years. We can even out your budget in the district by staggering the leases between three and four.
Would, would we be able to ask, even if we approved the audit today, would we be able to ask them to look at this portion of it and give us a preliminary idea of their thoughts on it?
Sure. I'll call them tomorrow.
We're not approving it till next Tuesday. This is the committee meeting.
Well, what I'm saying is, we may be able to expedite this portion so we can go ahead and approve approve the technology purchase prior to July 1st.
I would say, I mean, my comments on it are that your technology is rather old. It does need to be updated. I think the plan that we put in place, Chromebooks, laptops, really does help you standardize a lot, because right now you're dealing with all different ages of Chromebooks. You've got some MacBooks out there, you've got desktop devices, you're all over the board in what you have available to staff and students. This really brings it down to two categories, Chromebooks and laptops. So it comes a long way from where you've been. Also in this lease are some classroom projectors. We're going to try to replace thirty of those every year so that we don't have projectors that don't project well, or they're rather old, or, you know, 12 years old. They've outlived their life. They're just not meeting the needs that they need in the classroom. So if we get in that rotation cycle with those as well, that's going to update and keep your equipment fresh. So I think it is a good strategy. I don't, I don't have qualms about the consultant coming in and saying, that's not a good strategy. I would, I would feel like they would think that's a good approach to use. Certainly, I'm happy to talk to them. I'll call them tomorrow once the, you know, if we think we're going to have a green light on that proposal, then I will call them and start the ball rolling on that.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with what you said, and it's a great recognition that this proposal actually does simplify. Even though we've got two, it simplifies where we're at. Also, what I would hope is that when these consultants come in, you know, they're not just focused on some tactical changes for the next two months. That actually helps us paint a vision for the next five years. If, if they come back with a lot of tactical recommendations, then it was a waste of money. I hope it's not. But, you know, they should really be helping us define that blueprint, that technology blueprint for what we need to work to over the next five years. So hopefully, that's their expectation. It looked like it was, that they can kind of lay out, here's what our landscape should be. But that was, that was a good explanation at the end. Thank you.
And so this, these laptops will support both the Google Meets the teacher uses and the Schoology and all of that?
They do, they'll, they do everything the Chromebook could do and more.
All right.
We actually had students test these, the different brands and models we were trying, and they wrote up evaluations on them. And we had a teacher that also tested them and provided feedback, so they're, they're pretty good. We actually installed AutoCAD on a couple of them.
This isn't about computers, it's about the projectors that you mentioned. How often are those replaced? Just, you know.
I don't know if they had a replacement cycle on projectors previously.
We have about 350 projectors throughout the district, and about 110 of those are at the high school. And of course, we know that those are 10 years old now.
And roughly, how much do they cost a piece?
Well, there's two styles of projector. There's a hang from the center of the ceiling, traditional projector like these. And then there's a short-through interactive projector that comes with a pen that you can write on the screen and annotate.
The short answer is eighteen hundred bucks.
Yes. Thanks.
I was just wondering, because in other school districts, they use TVs instead. And they don't have to replace those TVs for a very long time. I just didn't know if that would be more cost-effective, or if teachers would be okay with that kind of thing, or if that discussion ever came up, or are they using these projectors for smart boards that I don't know about? Like, I don't know how they're exactly utilized in the classroom.
The interactive projectors they are using for smart boards, and the intelligence comes from the connected device. And so when you update the connected device, you update the intelligence. The flat panel TVs have a built-in Android computer that is outdated about three or four years after you buy them, and then you have to replace that computer inside of it. The flat panels also cost between four and $5,000 a piece. So we've looked at the flat panels, you know, they're, they're very bright and they're attractive, and I think everybody likes them. I don't think that it's a budget-friendly choice, because I think that since we get 10 years out of projectors, I think we're going to be pushing it to get 10 years out of flat panels in daily use.
And I think the answer to your first question is, I don't think they keep projectors until they die, so.
Yes, that was Dr. Pascarella's direction to me specifically. Thou shalt not replace projectors until they quit shining a light.
And then you just change the bulb, right?
Yes.
Okay, one through 12, under finances, are there, is there anything there that you do not want to have in the consent agenda? Okay, then, one through 12 in the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Ms. Turner. Okay, there are six items. Three of them are up for the third reading. Approval of policies, 201, 8.3, and 340 are up for third reading. Revision of policies, 137.1, 150, 209, 217, 233, 303, 314, 331, 333, 334, 335, 611, 626, 810.1, and 810.3 revisions. That is where we're combining the 400s and 500s all into the 300s. And finally, the rescinding of policies, 403, 431, 433, 434, 434.1, 435, 503, 531, 534, and 535 are all being rescinded.
Okay, so those three items, does anyone want them to be held out of the consent agenda? Because those will be on the agenda for voting.
Actually, this is their third reading. We don't need anything else on those tonight.
We don't have to vote on them?
Nope.
Oh, we don't?
We always have.
No, third reading. The third reading should have been next week.
Even though it's not a voting meeting tonight?
It should have been put on the vote, yeah, the third reading should have been put on the voting meeting, not this meeting.
Yeah, so these three have to be put on the voting meeting next week, right? Yes, so one through three can go on consent, and four, five, and six are not going to be voted on.
Correct. Four, five, and six are up for their first reading. Approval of policy 800.1, which is the electronic signature record. So we're keeping records of all this. There were some changes that PSBA had recommended. Revisions policy for first read is 113.1, 113.2, 113.4, 123, 123.2, and 311. 311 is a combining of old, or combining of the 400s and the 500s just into the 300s to meet PSBA requirements. And finally, the rescinding of 411 and 511 because they're being rolled into 311.
Thank you. Any questions on any of those policies?
No, but I would like to reiterate what Mrs. Dobus has said in the past. Thank you for all your work on this, and thank you, Amy, for all your work on this. Every meeting, we have a whole slew of revisions, resins, additions, and I know there's a lot that goes into it, so thank you.
The other two people that need to be thanked are Dr. Walsh and Mary Best, because they have done a large lift. they have done a large lift in helping Amy and I.
Just thank you.
Thank you. Okay, this next one is the selection of a voting delegate for the PSBA Delegate Assembly Meeting, and in the past, Ms. Rule, you have been that delegate?
Yes, it's a virtual meeting again this year. So, you know, we'll just be doing it virtually on a Saturday.
Is there, is there any voting that's going to be occurring?
Yeah, we'll be voting for the, the new, new legislation that they want to put in place. The conference is going to be a separate entity this year, and I was just complaining to Jim over here, I can't believe schools will be sending anybody to the conference. It's going to be in Terahawta. If any of you have ever been to Terahara, it is like the most expensive resort. I cannot believe, right Doug? It's awful. Like, in this time that they would even have it there, it's unbelievable. It's a nine-hour drive from Pittsburgh, so you have all that mileage, and the resort's so expensive, instead of having it at Hershey. So they've separated the two. The conference will be at Terahawta, which we don't have to go to, but the important one's the virtual delegate voting. And that'll be for all the legislation that the schools want to support.
And I think last year also, Ms. Turner, did you, were you one of our delegates last year?
No, I wanted to attend two of the conferences. Mr. Nagel was.
I was an alternate.
So how many voting delegates do we have?
We're allowed three, I think.
Okay, so who wants to be a voting delegate at this virtual meeting? Besides, you, I'm assuming you would like to be.
Right.
Anybody else?
Yes, not the most, it's not the most fun, but it's...
Okay, so I...
You sit through it.
So... Wait a second, when is, that's what I'm trying to see, is that...
Well, we go over all the legislation that's being proposed at Pennsylvania School Board.
October 23rd. October 23rd? That's what I was looking for, is the date of the meeting. I'm, I'm okay with it, and like I said last time, I didn't need, I was on there because I wanted to do two of the virtual conferences on policies that were being changed. That was a huge thing to sit through.
Okay, so for next week's meeting, Mr. McCoslin, would you put Mrs. Rule's name in there, and Ms. Turner's, Ms. Turner's name also? Anyone else? We have one more, if you want to. And then we have four student agreements. Is everyone okay with putting that on the consent agenda for next week? Any public comments, any phone calls?
There are no calls.
And I see no public comments either.
I can concur with no public comments. I had that open.
Okay. So at this time, we'll have board comments. Anybody on the board would like to make a comment?
I think there's a lot of data presented here tonight that actually is very good data. I appreciate it, Dr. Walsh, for putting together the AP data. That kind of simplifies a lot of things for us and for the community who's looking at those type of rankings and stuff like that. So, good job, everyone.
I'd like to make one comment on the IMS concert. Those students that were seventh and eighth graders, Mrs. Quinque pulled them together, and they had a really great string concert. I was so proud of them. I can't believe how well they did, having had so little practice all year. They did Phantom of the Opera, that was one of their songs. They did a great job.
Any other comments? Okay, I'd like to have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Christensen, seconded by Ms. Turner. All in favor? Wait. Go ahead, put it up.
Mr. McCoslin, I'm a yes.
Mrs. Rule?
Yep.
Okay, motion carries.